I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One time next please.
President Shearer.
Here.
Vice President Reese.
Here.
Secretary Summers here. Treasury Hanser.
Present.
Trustee McDonough.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Here.
Trustee Whitney.
Here.
Changes to the board agenda? No?
No.
Schedule public comment for agenda items only. We received one request. Yes. Do we have any others? For that agenda item? No? Okay, okay. So I'd like to call Marissa Prince up to the podium, please.
Hi, this is Al. Is there a green light on?
Yeah, press the button, the white one.
Okay, okay. All right. I'm here to speak about the agenda item, the Guidepost Report, the update that came from Guidepost. It has been 600 days plus since the shooting at the high school, and we still don't have very basic answers about what happened that day. And I am not satisfied with the amount of time that it's taken to get these answers, and I attribute that to the district delaying, causing delays. So in December of 2021, we were promised transparency and accountability by the board. Then in May of 2022, there was a unanimous vote to delay the investigation until after all litigation is completed. We still have a board member here who voted for that. It was a really painful decision when that was made, and that's partly what led us here why we still don't have answers. We've also had a lot of changes in leadership, a lot of confusion and closed sessions. We've had former board members come up here and make cryptic statements that I don't understand. So I'm asking that when we get to that agenda item, if each board member can let us know as a community, how do you feel? What's your comfort level with how long it's taken to get these answers for these families and for the community to find out what led up to these murders? Tom Donnelly sent an email in June of 2022 saying the investigation will be done with speed. That's not what happened. I'd like you to ask Guidepost when they come in August for the top three contributors to what's caused delays in this investigation. We need to know, we deserve to know, the top three contributors to the delays. Now, they've said publicly that when Dr. Markovich came on board, they got more cooperation. Why did it take an outside new superintendent? What's going on culturally inside of our district to not only contribute to the shooting? I think we'll find that out when we finally get the report, but to also contribute to people not being cooperating with investigators until we got an outside superintendent? And it really amplifies the need when we do our superintendent search that we're going to need to bring in a superintendent from the outside. We're not going to be able to bring someone from the inside. We have problems internally. So, and I ask that we start giving consideration to when this report drops on us. Could be October, could be November. I don't know. They're vague. But what's the plan to give us all, all of us, including all of you, time to process what we read and find out potentially really painful things? Time to process these findings, and it's going to need to be more than extra hours at the All for Oxford Resiliency Center? In closing, I am strongly dissatisfied with the district's handling of this and the steps you've taken towards giving us the accountability and transparency that we deserve and that the families of the victims deserve. It's taken too long. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Marissa. Consent agenda. I have minutes from July 11th special meeting and both regular meeting. Can I have a recommendation, please? Colleen?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support? Mary?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I do believe that at a minimum, we should amend the special meeting minutes. It's come to my attention that the way that we handled the appointment vote may constitute as a secret ballot, which could be brought to court and invalidated based on the fact that we used numbers instead of names. And so I think at a bare minimum, in the spirit of keeping it legal and transparent, that we should put on record our actual votes for the appointees.
Okay.
So what would the amendment be to the minutes? How would you want to amend the minutes? Are you introducing something else? I'm just wondering procedurally how to move it.
I think at the bare minimum, an amendment to add our actual votes by name. And it's not just something that I've come up with. I spoke with Brad Banasik at MASB, who also believes that we violated the Open Meetings Act by using this process, and he does not recommend that we do it in the future.
So what are we supposed to, if people do ask for confidentiality and they don't, we just have to tell them that they can't do it any other way?
I mean, yeah, you weren't, maybe you couldn't hear.
My mic's on.
But I think, I mean, obviously, most of us have been on a ballot, right? And we got results. I mean, it's really no different than being on a public ballot.
I mean, and we interviewed people. I don't, I don't think it's a, I mean, I really don't think it's a problem, but wouldn't it be something that would be introduced at? Minutes are a record of what has happened. So if we didn't do it at that meeting, then it shouldn't be in the minutes for that meeting. If it's something you wanted to introduce today, it would be part of today's meeting because it's, the minutes are a record of what actually happened.
So I'm going by Brad's recommendation, which I'll-
Did he give that to you in writing, just so we-
On the phone. And so, however, the board as a whole wants to figure out how to do that. It does not get us out of, you know, we can't unring the bell. We've already done it. But it's more of a kind of appeasement to the community for transparency.
Well, we didn't do it to not be transparent. It was more to, confidentiality was the original reason. Some candidates had asked to be confidential when we filled the last position, so we just kind of did it that way because they had asked originally to be confidential. That was when we filled the board seats the last time.
Which, as he explained to me, is the same process for superintendent, and you can absolutely honor during, when you're narrowing down the candidate list. But same as for superintendent, once it gets to the point of interviews, it should be named.
Okay.
Well, I will go back to, again, I don't, I don't think we should amend the minutes because we did what we did at that meeting. So if we wanted to have another voice vote today, then we could do that, but we can't change what happened. You know what I'm saying? I mean, that's just, that's a record of what's already happened. So if, we wouldn't amend the minutes. I just want to get that clarity. Right? So if we use numbers, then that's what it would be in the minutes. Do you understand what I'm saying? If, okay, that's all. I just wanted to be sure that I had that part.
Right, as a part of the mentoring.
I mean, we did have the vote.
Okay.
We had the motion. So, I mean, I would want to see specifically how we should say it before we do something else that might be misconstrued. So if we could get something from Brad in writing or one of our attorneys, so we do it the right way. I don't think that's going to change the outcome because we still all did vote to approve Colleen at the end. But if we need to redo something, absolutely we should. I want to be sure that we do it the right way.
So I agree that we should absolutely see what Brad recommends outside of that. He did recommend that, you know, in this meeting, that we verbally say who we voted for. So I think at a minimum, we could do that and then move on from there to see what procedurally there is anything we can do about the special meeting.
Did he say to make a motion or just to go around?
The way that it was a very, you know-
Robert's rules would require a motion, I would assume, and this is why I asked if it was in writing, because we need to be clear on how we document this moving forward, especially being that this is the first I'm hearing about it, you know, being an issue. So I just want to make sure that it's done correctly moving forward and not via hearsay. So is it a motion? Did he say, is it a motion? Do we do this? Is it a, do we just go around and say, are the name that we all associated the number with? So if that was the intent and you thought you were going to add a motion to the agenda, you know, you really should have let us, let somebody know, Vicki, or, you know, when we're putting the agenda together, that could have been part of the agenda that the public could have reviewed, and we could have also reviewed and digested for next time. I don't think any of us have a problem stating what number associated with what name. I have no problem doing that. Clearly obvious. But- As a board member, you want to, you know, if you have something like that to add to the agenda, it's better to do it when the agenda is being developed and then put out and onboard book for our community to review and for us to review and digest and look into and-
As opposed to a surprise at the table.
Correct. Okay. Because as board president, I would have followed up with MASB as well, just to make sure and ask for documentation, and that would have also been included in the board packet as well.
That's what I was going to say. If I had known, I could have gotten it in writing and we could have had it all here ready to go, whatever it is it's supposed to be. But I myself am not familiar with what it is he was talking to you about, so I would need to call and also become familiar, as you, so that we can be sure we prepare it properly.
So as part of the discussion, Vicki, are you going to follow up then so that it's on the appropriate agenda? Because again, as to Mary's point, we can't undo the record of what happened. It's on tape.
Right. I'll follow up, but probably the next board meeting.
Okay. Under the impression that we could amend it, so that's all I can figure we could do.
Well, I'll ask him that, but I have a feeling it's, that's probably not.
Okay. Okay, well, let's take a vote. We still have to vote it. So that was our discussion point. So what is the vote? So, yay?
The motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Yep, and you supported. We discussed it.
Because it is accurate. It is accurate to what happened in that meeting.
Correct. We're just, we're talking about the agenda, so the agenda is accurate.
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
So you have to vote according to that. Okay. I'm all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Superintendent's report?
Yes, I have three. First, we know that this week is going to be probably a difficult week for many of our students and parents and families and communities. I did send you, and I want to repeat for the board minutes, that we put some things in place in order to try to offer additional support to our Oxford people. The Resiliency Center is going to be open to serve parents and the community and students on Thursday and Friday for extended hours. Also, if the need appears to be there, they'll be open all weekend, and then again, extended hours on Monday to see how that goes. On Thursday and Friday, the Easter Seals will be offering virtual counseling to our staff on a phone-in basis. Lauren, who our recovery coordinator, has been in contact with our families and is offering them what support they've indicated to her might be most helpful. The Resiliency Center counselors will also be at the hearings to provide support should people there need it. And for central office people who are going to be manning phones and taking in inquiries during this period of time, as most of our, all of our buildings are closed except our central office, the Resiliency Center will be hosting a meeting for us on Thursday with Easter Seals, who is going to offer advice and training on how to deal with these kinds of stress, stressful events. So we have supports in place and hopefully we'll be able to get to everybody who needs.
Okay. Is that being communicated out to the public, all of those like extra hours and-
Yes, there was a memo that went out today, I believe, and there will be, I think, another one going out tomorrow.
I've seen it floated around lots of other places too, so we're trying to communicate as effectively as we can.
The Resiliency Center has put out their flyers, and so, I think so.
Okay.
My second report to you is an update on the progress we've made with the recovery plan. And you have a large document, which is the progress update of the recovery plan, this 30-page document, which we won't go over page by page, just so, but it's on the board book if anybody wants to see the full documentation of what we've done up to this moment in time. We are now working on the amended progress, on the amended continuous improvement recovery plan, which we'll bring to you in August, which is where we will go next step. I've tried to do an executive summary for those of you, and so the slide presentation Todd's going to help me with. First of all, I would like us to really review the key intentions that grounded the purpose for the recovery plan that was written by folks long before I came here. And the intentions and purposes spoke to me when I came here, and I just want us to look at them again. It was to restore physical and psychological safety and well-being. It was to coordinate purposeful efforts within and outside the district. It was to reclaim our school, district, and community. It was to create a cohesive approach to engagement with stakeholders, continue to learn and make ongoing revisions for growth, and strengthen our current practices and initiatives. And to that end, you wrote a plan that covered several areas, the first one of which is safety and security. So this in a very high-level summary form is what's happened so far with all of those objectives, and they are on pages two to seven of the report. So there were lots of pages of objectives in this particular that I've tried to reduce here to six bullets. There were many, 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 many surveillance systems and trainings and communications about all of them that went out. And I don't need to repeat them all, they're in the report, but all of those systems are installed. People have been trained, they have been in use, they have been effective, and you will find later on in this agenda that we are going to be adding another system that's even going to add to the effectiveness of what we had here. But what we have is working and has been fully trained and in place. Our ALIS training, threat assessment training, suicide assessment, okay to say, and safety procedures have been going, ongoing all year long. We still have staff to train. We still have new staff that will be trained as they are onboarded to the district, and we will also be going building to building in order to reinforce training at specific site by site instead of district level. The best thing we'll be doing for training this coming year is we have Allison, who's not here tonight, is off to become a trainer of trainer. James is becoming a trainer of trainer. We will have our in-house people being able to train our people, which will allow us to do more training more efficiently at more convenient times. We added the resource officer. We've been doing that. We did all building safety assessments, and now we're going to do them every year. Our Go Guardian and Gaggle has been in use, and our safety committees and subcommittees have been in place. We have some things that are still in process. The mass notification system is still being installed this summer. We'll have some training in the fall. There were some hiccups with that, that Eagle Technologies is working out with our folks. Daisy was used at the high school last year, is going to be used district-wide this coming year. Our signage is still being completed for all the buildings. We also had the Guidepost recommendation to do weapons detection seven days a week, 24 hours a day, all year long, all doors. That would have been impossible to do, or not impossible, it would have been enormously expensive to do with the systems we have in place. So later tonight, under Allison's section, I'll be telling you about a system we're bringing in later this summer that will meet that Guidepost recommendation. And our committee is going to be reconstituted. You have learned about the fact that we're putting in parent universities, and that's going to be an avenue through which we will continue to communicate to parents about more of the safety and security items. The other section in the report was mental health. This is pages eight to 14 in your progress report, and here we have truly, I have to say this because I've worked in a lot of districts that have had multi-tiered systems of support. And we're not perfect yet, but we are way ahead of anywhere I've ever, and remember, I was superintendent in Oakland County, so I got to see a lot of systems in place. Oxford is truly doing an amazing job with MTSS. That doesn't mean we're satisfied, but we're going to continue to get better, but it's at a pretty high level right now. We have lots of external counseling services, which we've already mentioned many times. We've had our workshops on anxiety, on suicide prevention, Prepare, Trauma-Informed Practices, okay to say, Go Guardian, you know about the therapy dogs, and you know we've added a lot of staff. We added family-school liaisons, we've added counselors, social workers, school psychologists, recovery people, a lot of staff. Mental health committee was formed, they met, they gave feedback, and they're going to be reconstituted and continue meeting. What's in process? As I said, we're going to continue to refine MTSS. Our external partnerships are in place, but we are going to continue to try to expand those. Right now, the need is being met, but we know when we all had the discussion around Honor Health, that we might be trying to bring in some more mental health resources, and we're still pursuing that. There you have all of the training that's going to continue going on. We'll be able to use Parent University for some of that parent training. And then this one, as I said on the prior slide, we added a lot of mental health professionals to this district, but we added them with one-time-only money. They were grants that came, and they're grants that will be gone at the end of this year. So one of the real challenges we have is to evaluate all of our expenditures in this area, along with expenditures across our entire district, to try to determine how we're going to continue providing what we have with approximately $12 million less in money. It's going to be a challenge. Social-emotional was another area. We did a lot with social-emotional learning, which you've heard about, a lot with our anti-bullying curriculum, which you've heard about. On pages 15 to 20, you'll get a lot of those scores and numbers and details you've been asking for, which I'm not going to repeat here. We've also been doing a lot of training in this area as well, across the district, and we have had committees and subcommittees formed. They did give feedback. We did a lot of surveying this year, culture-climate survey, bullying survey. We have ongoing surveys with PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program. In terms of what's in process, we're going to continue with the bully prevention. We have a second step program that we're going to be adding to the curriculum. The parents will be getting that communicated to them before it starts this fall. Restorative practices is going to continue. We're going to have to also look at other disciplinary practices. If you recall, in the culture-climate survey, that was an area where people thought we needed to get some improvement going across the district. PBIS continues. It is the program at the core of how we hope to get our discipline in line in a preventative way. The areas of strength and need in social-emotion learning are going to be identified in each building's climate survey, because each building has slightly different results, and when they do their continuous improvement plans for the coming year, they will be addressing those items. Our youth advisory is going to be established. Todd already told you about that. And again, much of this stuff will be brought to parents through parent universities. We have the staff wellness and retention. Our wellness committee formed late in the year, but they have accomplished a lot. They accomplished a lot in terms of surveying staff, identifying priorities that the staff had. They launched activities March through June. They're excited about what they do. They created the Thrive newsletter, which keeps our staff alert and aware of wellness. And they're going to meet all during the course of the year, and I expect really good things from this committee. We have our employee assistance plan, which launched and is ongoing. We have a lot of health awareness that we try to integrate into PD. It's interesting, one of the speakers was showing me a book just earlier on yoga. We have yoga, mindfulness, listening circles, journaling, those kinds of things. We're just going to try to integrate into PD when we have people together so that we can do mentally healthy things for ourselves as we practice doing business for the district. We also are evaluating our benefits and compensation packages. There's a shortage in staff. We have to make sure we stay competitive, and we have to make sure that we can retain employees. We've upgraded our exit interview form so that we can get more information from people who leave us. We're going to be evaluating that to see if there's areas we have to attend to. We've created some recruitment material, a video, and we're also expanding some recruitment sources. And with that, I actually went through both what we've done and what's in process. I spoke on both. We can skip this slide. Community government outreach. A lot of, you know, a lot of time was spent this year on the Honor Health proposal, which was, at one point in time, thought to be what might be a big partnership. As you know, its community support was mixed, and the agency withdrew its offerings. But we have expanded our partnerships with Easter Seals for student therapy. The Resiliency Center continues to serve many. We have tried to increase also our parent involvement, but this was an area on the culture survey where parents felt that we needed to do more in this, and so principals will be looking at how they can do that. We did form a new special education parent advisory this year, which is meeting and very active. We've had a lot of parent workshops on suicide, trauma, okay to say, SEL curriculum. And as we go to what's in process, the youth advisory, as I indicated, is going to be formed, working with the SEL and mental health group. I'm also going to form the superintendent student advisory this fall. This was something the board asked that I do in order to gain more student voice that I can bring back to you and that this advisory can bring back to you at scheduled things. So we'll have two student committees going on, one specifically focused on SEL and mental health, and the other one just focused more on district-wide kinds of activities at the high school. Our safety, health, special ed, mental health are going to continue their committees. Some of them will be reconstituted this fall, and we're going to have a very, very robust, robust calendar of parent university offerings for the course of the year. As I mentioned, we are really surveying those culture surveys. We had, we had good participation, we had a lot of really good information, and now it will only be good if we use it. So at our administrative retreat this fall, we're going to start the retreat by reviewing building by building that data and deciding what are the areas we have to focus on. Use our strengths to build on those areas where we need to make improvements, and we will continue working with first responders. That is, and that's it. That is the report in a nutshell. Any questions for me? Todd is there in case you have questions I can't answer? Yes?
I do have one question. So just briefly, Parent University is obviously in capital letters, so it's, I just don't know what it is.
So a lot of, and if Anita were here, she could, she could tell you a lot about it, but- it, but I'll try to summarize. And Steve, if you and Todd want to add in, you go right ahead. What we're trying to do is organize, under one big umbrella, an organized way of bringing things to parents. And it could be just an assortment of many things. It could be new curriculum that they might want to know about. It could be some safety, security process or procedure we have in place. It could be the SEL curriculum. It could be a mental health initiative. Do you want to name some of the other topics that's on there so far?
Yeah. The objective of the Parent University is really to bring all of our offerings, as far as, through the school district, under one umbrella for parents. So they can go to one site, they can find whether it's a curriculum night, whether it's an open house at an elementary school, a mental health offering, maybe we're reviewing a math night or a reading night, and they can just go to one location. Currently, we've got La Familia, one of our community partners, that is doing a four-part series for our high schoolers, and planning for college, and going through that with some of our English learners. We also have, another example would be North Oakland Community Coalition, is doing some work around suicide prevention in the month of September, which is Suicide Awareness Month. And we have, we've just got a number, our own staff, Bridgette and, Bridgette Bitner and Christine Russell are going to be doing some work around restorative practices and MTSS to increase just the understanding capacity for our community members around some of those topics. So it will all be under that one umbrella of Parent University. We can go to one place and find what's being offered on any given night.
And we also have the, besides the new, we're going to continue to offer suicide prevention awareness and assessments. What are they? Threat assessments, what are they? What's a threat? What's not a threat? Bullying, what is bullying? What is not bullying? How do we help kids deal with it?
How does this parent university?
And it will be in this Parent University. Sometimes the offerings will be from internal staff, sometimes we'll bring in outsiders.
Our goal, our goal will be to have our calendar presented at the end of August, our current calendar, and then we'll be adding to that throughout the year as we create different offerings, so.
Okay? All right.
So I just want to piggyback on that, actually, because I love the Parent University. I love the idea of it, and I think that it is going to help streamline a lot of things. And I was wondering if it would be possible to kind of do the same thing for this three-year recovery plan? Because what's on the district website right now is the plan as of 12 months ago, not with all of the updates, what's happened, and if there could be some sort of in-progress color coding, you know, yellow or green or whatnot, so that, that parents and every students, all stakeholders have a spot to go and just see what has been implemented, what has not yet, what we're doing, and so that it's not just a yearly update. They can see it more often, because I'm sure that anyone reading through, you know, was pleasantly surprised at a lot of these updates, but they had been completed for six months or more, right? So I just was wondering, and on top of that, there's a lot of places in here where it says, "This was set at a board meeting on May 2022," or "This was in a Peach Jar," or "This was in a," if we could have links, so that it's not so disjointed, and kind of along the same line of Parent University. Is that at all a possibility?
We will, we will look at that. Right now, we're really working hard to get you the new plan in August, but what you're suggesting is, as that new plan is put in place, we have something on the website that allows us to update it more frequently.
Yeah.
And we will look at what kind of process that could be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. You ready for my next report? Communications. So we've been upping our efforts. We promised you a communications report, and here it is. So Dani, it's yours.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, I am here to share with you a little bit about what we have been up to from a communications district standpoint, as well as where we're going in the future, and what our plans are for next year. The department is comprised of myself and our communication specialist, Chloe Bachman, and I thank you so very much for allowing Dr. Markovich to return the department to a two-person team. My nights and my weekends appreciated as well. Attached in the board agenda, you receive the newly crafted communications guidebook, as well as the Continuous Communication Improvement Plan. Tonight, I'm going to touch on some of the aspects of the guides and our goals. We strive to efficiently, effectively, and caringly communicate to all of our stakeholders, internally and externally, in alignment with support of our mission, our vision, and our initiatives in the education of our students. Our stakeholders are listed up here on the screen for you. They are comprised of, of course, you, the school board, our students, our staff, our parents, and our community at large. Underneath each is all the different methods in which we communicate, or we work with community partners, such as our local news media, to communicate. I'm going to touch on our main methods that we utilize within our little department. They are School Messenger, the website, District Quarterly Newsletter, flyer distribution through Peach Jar, and our social media. Our School Messenger is our mass communication tool that we utilize within the district. I can tell you that the aspect of this in our department has grown exponentially since COVID. Prior to COVID, we may have sent one, maybe two, district-wide communications in a month. Now, we sent out nearly 200 this year alone to our stakeholders, which totaled 158,976 sent emails. I love the little analytics that School Messenger can provide for us. With all of those, we work hand in hand with our different departments across the district, whether it's our transportation department, our food services department, recovery, you name it, we connect with them. Just prior to COVID, I came back from a Michigan Schools Public Relations Association meeting, where all of the school communicators within the state get together and share best practices, and do some of our own professional development. This idea was presented to me, and I thought it was a fabulous idea, and had no idea what impact it would have us, have on us in the future. This is where we house all of our school district and building-wide communications on, well, this one is our district-wide, on the website. This allows, for many different purposes, our staff, our students, our parents can all go to one location on their website, whether it's the school or the district, and find out everything that's been communicated in a mass form in a very easy way. One thing we didn't anticipate this providing to us was a very good way for us to point the media to what we've already shared with our parents. We won't ever share anything with the media that we don't share with our school family This will update on August 1st, and anything that we have recently released that will, that pertains to the past school year will be added there as well. The other two components of our School Messenger that we use quite often when necessary is our text messaging system. The text messages are sent when significant information needs to be conveyed and action may need to be taken, such as phone service outages and requests for district surveys to be answered, so we can get that data. The phone and the voice messages are sent when significant information must be conveyed, because action must be taken by our parents, such as alerting parents of student absences and our school cancellations. Of course, that favorite of the snow day call. As a whole, our School Messenger system, which is also utilized at the building level, in our classrooms, and at a school-wide level, we sent out 1,826,006 emails through the system in this last calendar year. Just fun, fun number facts. Another little component of School Messenger is, it also ties into our website, and this is our alert box. While we're sending that message out to families, we can also pop in the information that will then pop up on our website, so that, you know, items such as, "There's going to be wet cement behind the board office, so don't walk in it," can be easily conveyed to our Since we are talking about the website, this is a hub of all information. As you had just heard them talk about Parent University, this is where Parent University will be housed as well. So it'll be easily accessible, and you'll be able to find all of those awesome offerings and resources. Up here on the board are a few of the things that we are required or that we do, just because it is best practice for our parents and our students. We do have state regulations that also guide us in what needs to be put up on the website. I can tell you that as part of our, our goals and our continuous improvement, we are going to be switching to a new web host in this coming year, I'm hoping by the end of January. They're going to be doing a custom design for us, so it will take a little bit of extra time, but I do feel it will be worth it, so that our families, our stakeholders, will be able to easily accessible, easily access all of our information. We, right now, train all of our web hosts, which we have a web host at each of the buildings. I can tell you that that's been a little difficult in the last few years to keep up on, so it's very tricky on the back end to do, make the edits and the updates. So our department really does a lot of that heavy lifting, as people aren't always in it, so we are usually helping them through it. We've just asked each of our departments and our schools to keep us abreast on what needs to be updated, because there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages. While we are talking about the website, on the front, you'll notice a little Peach Jar icon. Peach Jar is our electronic flyer system. This is, was instituted in 2016. It's been an incredibly helpful little vessel for communicating, especially in the last few years, as we've gotten so many different offerings to us for events. Within our district, we're able to use it, as well as community partners outside of our district. As long as what they are sending to us, we have to approve it. It has to have all of the major components, as well as, and most importantly, abide by what we're doing to serve our students. It has to fit in with our vision and our mission, in order for us to approve it and allow it to be accessible. As you can see on this, our parents are able to opt in or opt out. If they don't want to receive Peach Jar communications, they don't need to. This one right here was one of our community partners, and it received over 4,000, or it was sent to over 4,000 different emails. And it was also hit on, you're also able to hit on it on our, the front side of our website, on each page. You can click on that, and this one had over 200 hits alone. I can tell you that we, we learned the hard way, that Google Analytics was not set up on our previous website, so it will not be helpful in guiding us to what needs to be put on in the future. However, that was one of our first things that we asked to make sure was put on the new site. And we will use that data to help steer what needs to be presented, and what is just not as necessary as we may have thought. Oh, and I forgot to tell you that a lot of those Peach Jar flyers, I need to give great thanks to Chloe, and, well, it's just one of my little loves, too. We do a lot of the designing for different flyers throughout the district, different departments and different groups, so that it can not only house all the information that's necessary, the who, what, where, when, how, all the contact information for, if someone has a question, but it also abides by our district branding, and looks pretty. And leading into our District Quarterly Newsletter, which is one of our favorite design projects, this goes, goes out quarterly. It has evolved quite a bit through the years, and it's typically a 12-page newsletter that houses our top news and information for all of our district stakeholders throughout the district, or throughout our, our district, as well as surrounding areas. We send out 19,219 of these to the homes. It has become quite a sense of pride, and it's where we can share how we are really fulfilling our vision, our mission, and our initiatives with our students and our amazing The fun part is, a lot of our head and lead stories are taken from the top posting social media posts. But not everybody has social media, so of course, that's why we send, send those stories home as well. One of our initiatives and our goals was to increase our social media reach, as well as all the platforms. Many folks out there have a preferred platform, but they don't jump from one to another often, and this way, we can get our amazing news, and how we are fulfilling our vision, our mission, and our initiatives in front of as many people as possible. Facebook is, of course, the leader. This year, we just reinstituted and started posting more on Instagram. Twitter was created, and then LinkedIn was just created a week or two ago. And that was in collaboration with our Human Resources Department, so that we can help with their initiatives in drawing potential stakeholders to our district. On Facebook, we have 10,500 followers. This, we reached 354,547 individuals last year alone, and we had over 90,000 page and profile visits. On Instagram, like I said, we are just growing that, so I'm excited to see where that's going to go. But we also know that a lot of our younger parents tend to utilize this platform rather than Facebook, so it's important for us to do that. Right now, we have 1,476 followers, and our reach is 9,876 people with page and profile visits over 6,000. Our Twitter impressions are already up to 21,500, and our LinkedIn, well, we have 166, so we have a lot of room for growth there. That was just activated. And I have to say, it was pretty fun to be activated at that moment in time, because it was the same time that Chris Hinkins, one of our recent Oxford graduates, had compiled that really great video for our Human Resources Department, so we were able to launch it through that. Our top post in the past 90 days was this little one that Chloe created for us on our student athletes, and that garnered 44,069 post impressions, and it reached 43,701. So essentially, the impressions are, people watched it over and over again, which is pretty cool. This doesn't, that doesn't incorporate everything that we do, but it gives you a little bit of how, how we spend the majority of our time. And as I have started to weave in through the presentation, and you received in your board packet, how we are going to continue to improve our department and grow and expand. So we're definitely growing and expanding our social media reach. We're going to be moving the district's website to a new host and design to be more user-friendly and easier for navigation for all stakeholders. We are going to be conducting communication audits across the district to streamline and enhance best practices at the classroom, building, district, and community levels. And then we'll also be collaborating with our district departments to best support and communicate their initiatives by providing an individual communication plan this coming year. So we'll actually have a form for folks to fill out, so that we don't miss any steps, and that they are also available, aware of everything that's available and ways to communicate. We'll be doing this with initiatives such as the You Matter Attendance Campaign, Parent University, the bullying information, and so forth. Thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions, I am happy to oblige. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to just mention that I know we didn't take you through the entire communication guidebook, because it's many, many, many pages, but this had never existed in our district before, and it is now a guidebook that will be very usable by staff, by maybe you guys too, if ever. And I really want to thank Dani for the extra effort in putting this together.
Where'd Dani go? She sat down already.
Dani, thank you so much for putting all this together. I really appreciate the effort also at getting folks, getting this all streamlined, you know, so there's some continuity between buildings, and there's support between buildings, too, because sometimes when you have people change, and, and it's, and it's good to, to look at the different spaces and, and find the same kinds of things. It gets, so I appreciate that, you know, helping develop that continuity and... So I appreciate that, you know, helping develop that continuity and figuring out what's working and what's not and not just jumping in thinking that we know what's right, but talking with staff and principals and let's get it working well for everybody. So thank you, this is great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board of Education Matters, I have a letter I'd like to read. This was also put in our board packet. It is on Guide Post's stationery. This was not drafted by anybody at Oxford Community Schools. It was drafted by Guide Posts and given it to us to include in our board packet and to also read at our meeting. It's dated July 19th, 2023. It's addressed to Oxford Community Schools Board of Education, 10 North Washington Street, Oxford, Michigan, 48371, regarding the status of the report of the independent investigation. Dear Oxford Community Schools Board of Education, Guide Post is pleased to provide you with this monthly status update. Since Guide Post's last appearance before the board, Guide Post met with officials from the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office and the Oakland County Sheriff's Office where Guide Post was given access to additional materials relevant to Guide Post's independent investigation. We have also received additional relevant documents from the district and interviewed more witnesses. For the most part, we are now writing the final report. There may be some additional follow-up work this summer to address any gaps, but we are on schedule to deliver the final report this fall. A Guide Post representative will provide a public update at the August 8th board meeting. Sincerely Bradley Disick. He is the Executive Vice President of Guide Posts. Here's the letter, if anybody wants to see it, they are welcome to look at it, but it was in the board agenda. And so I wanted to make sure I read that. So our next scheduled meeting is August 8th and he will be here. So if you have questions regarding the report, if you have questions regarding the timing of the report, that's the person to ask. He's writing the report, so he would have the capabilities to answer your questions and he will be here. And he will be here to answer your questions after the meeting if you want to talk with him. So he's coming himself, so he will be here on August 8th at the board meeting and he will have time to stay and answer questions. Okay. Do you want to move? Do you have anything to add to that, Vicki?
No.
Okay. So moving on to the next thing is the FOIA appeal.
Yes, we've had a FOIA request for some attendance records. We gave to the requestor the records that we had, which was basically redacted attendance records that we had actually sent to Guide Post. Normally, we don't have these records, but the fact that Guide Post had previously asked for it, we had created the record for Guide Post, we were able to pass the record on. It was evidently, it was not exactly what the requestor wanted and so she has filed an appeal. And we have a recommendation that you accept this repeal and ask for a 10-day extension so that we could try to further clarify what was missing from what we sent. There's a motion on the agenda to accept and to extend.
Okay. Any want to read it? Mary?
Moved to accept the FOIA FOIA appeal submitted by Kristen Carr on July 17, 2023 and to respond to the appeal by 10 business days from today.
Thank you, support. Amanda? Any discussion?
Yes, can you read the actual appeal so everyone can hear it?
We'd like more information in regards to attendance and will not be withdrawing my appeal. Thank you, Kristen Carr.
What was the original request on attendance?
She made two requests on attendance. I don't have the original request here in writing. The first request was an attendance record of all students absent on November 30, 2021 and the other one was for all students present on November 30, 2021, in brief.
She might have asked from 29th also.
I can send those to you. I did not bring them to tonight's meeting.
So the ask on... So we provided those documents redacted?
We provided the attendance record of absences redacted. We don't have a report of every student attending school, that would be thousands of kids a day. We record absences. But we redacted the names of the students and we redacted the specific reason for the absence because in many cases, if you have the reason for the absence listed, it's an unusual, I mean, it's a reason where anybody who knew that a youngster was having this, that or the other thing done would know who the youngster was. And even when we submitted to Guide Posts, we remove, under the FERPA regulations, all identifying information that could conceivably identify a student.
So can you read that again? Sorry, I'm trying to process this because if we provided the information, I'm struggling to understand what the actual appeal is.
We'd like more information in regards to attendance and will not be withdrawing my appeal. We received this, however, Erin, today at 4:53, so we've not had a chance to go back and find out what it is she thinks might be missing. And this is being handled by Annabelle Shay as all FOIAs that have anything to do with that time period are handled. So this, in order for me to find more specific information for you, I'm going to have to go back to Annabelle, the attorney, and then I can get you whatever we have.
So the motion is to say that yes, we received the appeal and...
We'll answer you in 10 days.
Answer you in 10 days. Okay, so it's not saying that we're doing anything except we are acknowledging the receipt?
Right. And you are expecting, and you're expecting the district to look into it and you're expecting the district to answer her within 10 days.
Okay. Well, yes, we gave her information. She asked for a key to make it more definitive. We provided the key, so we've, you know, responded and provided what was asked, but so we'll have to look into that and...
You know, with a FOIA, you only need to release a record you have. You should not create a new record every time you get a FOIA. So we have to determine what is it exactly, and this would be what Annabelle would be figuring out, not me, because she's our representative on this. And then we have to determine, is what she's asking truly a record that we have? Because that's the key to this. I believe we have given every record that we have, but maybe she'll describe something and we'll discover something else.
And we have not seen what was provided, right? Have we gotten a copy of that?
No, no. I can give it to you.
It's public record once we send it to them, right?
We sent it to Guide Posts.
Well, and...
Yeah, it's public.
Kristen. Yeah, I'd appreciate it. It makes...
I mean, by the time you redact all the student names and by the time you redact the reason they've been absent, the only thing you have left is the number of people absent hour by hour at the high school.
You know, first hour misses so-and-so, so many absences.
Yeah.
So it is broken down by class?
Yes.
It is broken down by class?
Not if there's more than one and you don't know the reason.
And there's, you know, there's...
I think it's part of my discussion, just for the record, I'm very uncomfortable with this request as a parent. So I'm just going to put that on the record that I'm very uncomfortable with that request, both from a FERPA standpoint, from a potential HIPAA standpoint. There's many avenues.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to, as part of the discussion portion of this, I'm just saying that out loud to someone who's a parent in this district.
Erin, can you tell me why or what it is I don't know? Like why is the, what is the concern?
The concern is that there are kids who come to school every day and kids who are absent every day. That information typically is not public record for many reasons. What I would say from a FERPA standpoint, if there is any indication that one blacked-out line was missing and say someone was out for any reason, it could be identified in this town as that person. And that's a FERPA violation and that would be on us to make sure that we're protecting our students' identities and why they were absent. I have no doubt that the people at the school did a great job black marking everything on a piece of paper and making it probably incredibly difficult to read, but I am extremely uncomfortable with that as a parent, as a parent of a student who is present on November 30th, and I don't want to leave anyone vulnerable for any questions of whether, why their student was or was not there that day to someone in the public for unknown reasons.
And Erin, I understand absolutely your concerns. That's why we were careful with the document, that's why we were careful what we gave Guide Posts. The redacting was done at our central office. It was done electronically, no blackout marker, which you can see through.
But if it lists the teacher's name, does it let the teacher become vulnerable?
Hmm. That's a question I'll ask the attorney. We got some advice on what we needed to redact, but that's a good point and I'll ask the attorney.
Well, and what use is going on with the usage of this information?
I'm not here to debate that. I'm just letting you know I'm uncomfortable with the request.
I agree. Okay. So we're going to have to go into a vote. So is that the end of the discussion or does anybody have anything else? No?
Sure.
So let's be clear. Let me read it again so we can be clear on what we're voting for. Mary, you want to read it again, please? And then Amanda, if you want to second it again, you can or not.
Well, that's already been done, so I can just read it again.
Well, okay, just reread it then as a reread.
Moved to accept the FOIA appeal submitted by Kristen Carr on July 17, 2023 and to respond to the appeal by 10 days from today.
So what we're saying is that we're acknowledging that we got it and that we are appealing it.
Well, I think it's two different things, actually. Acknowledging that I received it and stating that the district needs to take directive on it are two different things.
We'll respond.
Well, we have to by law.
Yeah, they have to respond.
We have to respond.
We respond that we're not giving them the information.
And because it's an appeal, it has to come before the board.
Okay. I made my case.
Okay. So Amanda supported, okay, so I'll go into...
Colleen, is that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is that, okay.
Yeah.
Understand where your vote is?
Why would we have, what would be the premise for saying no? I guess then. If it's by law, I have to say yes.
It's by law that you have to receive the appeal. The board has to accept the appeal or not accept the appeal.
So are we accepting or not accepting is the question then? Just not acknowledging it's received? I guess I'm getting lost in the minutia.
The advice we got, and I'm really sorry now, I don't have the attorney here. I wasn't, I should have anticipated that there would be more questions here. The advice we got from our attorney was that the board should accept the appeal and give the district 10 days to deliberate it and then either find some way of honoring the request or denying it again if we can't find what it is she's asking for. That was our advice.
So if they continue to appeal, we can decline.
We don't have to acknowledge or accept it.
We have...
Unless there's some FOIA law.
That's why it's coming, but the board has to vote on it.
No, I get that.
I don't know, I don't know the law, if there has to be some reasoning for to deny it.
I don't know all the FOIAs, ins and outs, I'll be honest. That's a whole nother legal...
There's special rules around FOIA.
I can...
Advice of counsel.
On the advice of counsel, which came to us today, given this came to us late today, and as I said, this was 4:53 today, so there's not been a lot of time to do a lot of investigation. The advice of counsel was to accept the appeal and give us 10 days to determine where it will go.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No?
Opposed.
Okay, opposed, one. Motion carries. Curriculum and instruction.
If you recall last board meeting, you approved OVA's hybrid ELA 9 through 12 curriculum. And so we're back this week. That's Janet Shell from OVA and Caitlin Martin here is going to help present. And we're going to also seek board approval on OVA's custom ELA 12 course for this time our full-time OVA students. And so Caitlin will give you some of the ins and outs of this custom-built course, what the purpose was behind it and what the outcomes are we're trying to achieve in this design.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back. As Steve said, these courses that we are going to present today are for our full-time OVA students. The curriculum we presented last time was for our hybrid students. So just to start off, these were some of the key components of Portrait of a Graduate that we tried to keep at the forefront of our minds while we were creating these courses. Just a quick overview of the ELA 12A and 12B curriculums. And when we say ELA 12A and 12B, what we mean by that is 12A is first semester courses, 12B is second semester courses. The reasons for this addition, the ultimate goal is to create custom courses for all of our ELA classes at OVA, but we started with ELA 12. We'd really like to align with the high school, OHS, for the summative assessments and also the unit standards. So when students move from OHS to OVA or vice versa, they are not missing any benchmarks, they are not missing standards and they have a quicker time to pick back up that material. We also have more teacher control over the curriculum in order to customize it for our students and update it as needed. And then it will also allow us to incorporate our MYKIP or our school improvement goals more intentionally throughout the year. Some strengths of this particular curriculum are the student-centered design that allow teachers to really come alongside students and customize it based on their needs, the formative and summative assessments that are going to tie directly into the course reading and the anchor texts, again, the use of anchor texts, which some of our courses don't do right now, and then there are a wide range of literary and nonfiction texts that will allow students to be exposed to various authors, voice and choice in both paths and assessments, and connecting classwork to students' futures. These will be our seniors, so they will be heading out into the world after they complete these courses, so we really wanted to be intentional about connecting it to their lives after high school. So to start off, ELA 12A would be that first semester course that all students will take. Students will read a young adult contemporary fiction novel, they will also read Shakespeare and they will also read some nonfiction texts and analyze some data and then they will engage in a lot of reading, writing and speaking. This is just an overview of some of the instructional methods that we use and will use in these courses and then assessments that will promote the attainment of standards, both summative assessments, so assessments that students will complete at the end of a unit or at the end of a course, and then the formative assessments that students will complete throughout the unit and will allow a lot of teacher feedback to prep them for those summative assessments at the end. and will allow a lot of teacher feedback to prep them for those summative assessments at the end. Some text and instructional examples for this course in particular. The young adult literature book that they will read is American Road Trip by Patrick Scott Flores. That has been approved by the board, I believe, two years ago. And then students will choose their path of study based on what they see for themselves after high school and what they are interested in. So there will be a college success path. And then there will also be a professional and technical writing path for students who would like to choose that. And then we have an instructional example there of how to write a proposal that will be built into the course. Now, once we get into second semester, students will get to choose their path in terms of their course. So the first course offering we have is a novel study. And we came up with this course because we took a poll of our students and they said that they would like a course that focused on reading novels, interpreting novels, and working with them in that way. So we came up with this course where students will read three different texts and engage in various reading and writing practices. Again, here are some instructional methods that students will engage in. And then we have our student-centered design, which creates a lot of teacher support, but also allows students to start to work more independently. And then we have our assessments there at the bottom, both summative and our formative assessments. And then we have our texts and instructional examples. So the course texts here, we have Persephone, which is a graphic novel. We have In the Wild Light, which is a young adult fiction text. And then we have The Book of Lost Names, which is a historical fiction text. And then we have our unit ending there for Persephone. Another course that students could choose from this is podcasting. We have a lot of students who are interested in telling stories, but how to verbally tell stories, which I think is so cool. So this course will explore a lot of that. It will be a lot of listening and reading and finding out the components of how we tell and share our stories. So here again are, are our instructional methods. We will have a lot more videos and listening activities in this course. And then our summative assessments there at the bottom. Students will create and produce their own podcast episode. And then they will also have some formative assessments there where they work through interview questions and work with their peers and their teachers. And then one of the instructional examples we gave here is the Finding Your Story Unit, where students find the story about their own life that they want to tell and share with others. And then the last course, course option that we have is the College Technical School and Career Prep Course. Students would, could take this course if they choose. And this will focus on academic skills that are needed after high school. This course, they will read the novel Outliers by Malcolm Gladwell. And then they will again choose their path of study, college success or professional and technical writing. And the final unit is actually an independent study where students get to choose and be more engaged with their learning in that way. And we have here our summative assessments and our formative assessments that are embedded within the course. And then this is just an instructional example of a lesson on the epilogue of Outliers and how students would work through that. So that is all we have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just really have a statement, not a question, but I know in the climate survey, that was an area of improvement that we had needed was relating the curriculum to the real world. And with the podcast and the book Outliers, I think that you've done an incredible job with that. And I, I think that it'll be very engaging. So I really like that.
Thank you.
Very good. That's a good one.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Okay, I'll set speed.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving right along to safety and school operations. I know Dr. Willem is absent, but do you want to?
Yes, I do.
Update and read it.
The first item of business is, is rather routine. Our charter school, Lighthouse Connections Academy is, has approved, or has found another board member. They would like to seat on their board. And as the charter authorizer, we need to approve that board member for them. So that is Mr. Walter Reese, Sr., and there is a recommendation written to do just that. His term would begin immediately and would expire June 30, 2024.
There was also a memo in your board packet to outline all of that, speaking that they have already interviewed him and his collective qualifications. So who would like to read that? Anybody? Erin, please? Move to appoint Walter Reese, Sr. to the Lighthouse Connections Academy Board of Directors as recommended. Support? Colleen? Discussion? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. B installation of the DriftNet Inc. security system.
Yes, I mentioned this earlier. The board is also aware of this system. It is a system that will detect through AI weapons. It is a system that is a visitor management system. It also is a vape detection system in all of our bathrooms. It's a silent alarm and it provides geo-fencing around our properties. A lot of the details about the security system itself are encased in our EOP, our emergency operating plan, obviously for security reasons. But this will, through cameras, audio and video camera, cameras, this will allow us to detect and run a silent alarm seven days a week, 24 hours a day. All of our buildings, all of our entries and exits, our hallways, classrooms. The vape detection obviously is not camera. There is a sensor that is put in the restrooms that can detect evidently the air that vaping creates. I've never vaped, so I'm not sure what it, what it does. But something that happens when you vape gets detected by this system. And it, it, what happens if the system finds an event? There will be employees in our district who are approved to receive the event via phone or iPad or a tablet. If there's no event, no one can see what's being viewed by the cameras until there is an event. And it is not stored or under memory until there is an event. So it is definitely surveillance 724. But it connects to us only when there is a event to be, to have concerns about. They're going to start installing this in about a week.
27th or something like that?
Well, we postponed it for a week. It's going to be sometime next week. And we're going to operate redundantly for a year because this is a new system. We're going to keep all of our current systems in place. And we're going to operate redundantly and make sure this works the way it's supposed to work. And it has been brought to us as a grant through the company that is providing it. So there will be no cost to the district.
That's that report. Huge gift.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Unscheduled audience? Okay. Okay, moving right along. Marissa Prince?
Hello, I just wanted to say real quick. I noticed in the security update, it did not mention those gun vaults that came before the board. And someone had mentioned to me that those might be coming back on the agenda as soon as August, is what I had heard. So I just wanted to give a reminder. We were told, or I thought it was suggested, there would be some kind of like Q and A or town hall or like information session about the gun vaults before you guys voted on it again. And that's something, I have a lot of questions about that. And that's something I definitely want to attend. So, you know, I didn't see it mentioned in the presentation, thankfully. And I know public comment was overwhelmingly against it. So maybe it's gone, hopefully. But I, I want to make sure that that happens before it goes back on an agenda. The gun vaults for the middle school and the high school filled with the long gun, high-powered rifles. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Brandy? Rebeccae? Did I say that right?
Rebeccae.
I'm sorry, Rebeccae.
It's okay. I just wanted to kind of reiterate things that Marissa said earlier about the guideposts. We, I, my son was new to the district this year, this past school year for sixth grade. We came, we bought our house in Oxford in 2022 with the guise, or under the guise, under the understanding that, that there was going to be transparency on how things were going to proceed. As far as the shooting, we were in Lake Orion. I lived within sight of LaPire Road at the time of the shooting. I, I saw what was going on. My son's elementary school was on lockdown, all, as all Lake Orion schools were also locked down during, during that case. Unfortunately, I haven't felt that there has been as much transparency as there should be. And that is deeply frustrating to myself and my husband. My neighbors both worked in Oxford schools and had students, children that attended Oxford schools. And they both left, they both left teaching in the school district and their students are no longer in the district. They are in a different district because they were unsatisfied with how things were going. And they saw that obviously before I did because we were not part of this district. That being said, the delays have made the news. That's, and not just local news, which is concerning. I have friends all over the country who have brought it up to me. I, Marissa said that litigation, that there was talk of delaying a lot of transparency until after litigation was completed. I know that there are a lot of different lawsuits out there right now and litigation could take years. And I don't want my son to be graduating when this is finally resolved and we finally are getting answers. Yes, I'm aware he's going into seventh grade, but six years? That's not a lot of time for a litigation to be resolved. I also agree that we need more accountability now. I agree that we need a superintendent from outside of Oxford, even outside of Lake Orion, because it's very close. And that it's concerning to me that it took getting Dr. Markovich in as superintendent to get things moving with guideposts. That I just, again, like I said, that, that's concerning to me.
Do you want to ramp up your thoughts?
Yeah, just real quick. So after the report in the fall came, or after, for the report in the fall, if it comes close to Remembrance Day, I feel like that is an insensitive time to distribute that. I feel like there, there should be thoughts on that timing. I also, just real quick, last thing I wanted to say. The first report did show that even after students were deemed the highest risk, they, not all of them were evaluated for firearm access. And I would like to see in the next report how that is being taken care of and how that's being looked into.
Okay, thank you. Danielle?
Principled, acting in accordance with morality and showing recognition of right and wrong. Open-minded, willing to consider new ideas, unprejudiced. Reflective, relating to or characterized by deep thought, thoughtful. These three words and definitions are the exact definitions published on the Oxford Community Schools Facebook and Instagram in the last two weeks. Ironically, we got the communications update today. It's been 602 days since the mass shooting and murder of Tate, Hannah, Justin, and Madison. With no recognition of right or wrong by this board or administration, no reflection of the damage and the lack of, that the lack of accountability and delays are causing and continue to cause victims, families, students, staff, and community. The lack of accountability is damaging. 602 days. Open-minded, no. This board continues to relinquish its authority to a free, no cost to the district, insurance attorney, Mullins. An opportunity presents itself to secure a new board member with relevant skills, capabilities, desire for change, to help rebuild community, trust in the community. And the board instead chooses complacency. 17 months. And a candidate that publicly admitted they saw no need for change. As a parent, as a community member, and as one of two overqualified candidates that interviewed for that open seat, I continue to be appalled by the decisions, the delays, the meeting violations, the excuses made over these last 600 days. I, I will thank Amanda and Mike for being outliers and voting for change. It's clear, though, the decision was made before the interviews even occurred. The interviews speak for themselves and the way that you all voted. This community is observant. They are insightful. They are diverse. They are intelligent. And we see you. And we are not happy. We want change. We want accountability. We have been patient, beyond patient, asking for it. We deserve better. Tate, Hannah, Justin, and Madison deserve better. My daughter, preparing for her junior year, deserves better. The guidepost delays are the responsibility of the board. Yes, guidepost is doing the work. The board, Oxford Community Schools, is the client. We are paying them to do the work. So we need to stop with the excuses and at least acknowledge the, your part in the delays. Companies, CEO, lose CEOs and leadership team members all the time, all the time. They don't put their strategy and business on hold for 600 days. I'll finish with one last word.
Please do.
Incompetent.
Thank you. All right. Kira?
Erskine.
Erskine, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I got the first.
Hard to follow Danielle because she's saying everything that we've echoed for the last 602 days in a lot more eloquently and probably politely than I would like to. I do want to say thank you to Erin for today and the FOIA request and sticking up for the children and their safety and their, just the kids this time. Also, thank you to Mike and Amanda for not sticking with the status quo. I appreciate you guys. That being said, there's so much that needs to be done. We all care about the kids, but yet we still have delays in the guideposts, delays in the memorial after 602 days, and delays in FOIA requests for committee members. For the, the, the names of those who are on those committees. Still not getting anything done. And I just heard about this new security system that's going into the bathrooms, if I'm understanding that correctly. That's concerning because I read a report on how the Ring employees are also monitoring things that happen in the bathroom and different things. I'd like to know a little bit more information about the employees of the company that's, that's going to be having access to this for when something happens. When you guys have discussed about losing funding for the staff at the end of the year for the 23, 24 school year, how are we going to make that up? And if the staff has to leave, who's going to be lost? Is it going to be our mental health professionals or all these extras that are, are needed? Who's, who's going to be the first to go on that? Like everyone else has said, we're, we're tired. We want the change, we want the accountability. And even with the, so today, I feel that the board is not taking any responsibility on the timing on guideposts, on the actions leading up to November 30th when it comes to the training and everything. And Danielle said it, incompetent.
Well, thanks. Well, thanks. Kristin Carr?
All right. I do appreciate you putting my name and FOIA request on the record for the public, even though you guys can't put your new board member names on your ballots in your public vote. To clarify, my FOIA did not say what you guys said. I asked for attendance numbers from 11:01 to 11:30. My request was denied by Tim Mullins' office. I very specifically asked for all student information to be removed. I asked for numbers of students in attendance and not in attendance that day. I do not want any kind of student records. I want numbers, that is it, from 29 days leading up to the shooting. That's all I'm asking for. So no, I will not withdraw my appeal. What I was given yesterday, I was called by Tim Mullins' office and asked to withdraw my appeal because I was given some spreadsheet that I can barely read that shows absences on 11:30. That's not what I'm looking for. Moving on to what I actually wanted to say today. Here we are over 600 days later, over 600 days since parents, since the parents of Madison, Tate, Hannah, and Justin have seen or felt their children. Over 600 days. I hope that number stings with all of you. Over 600 days since this district failed our children. And you did in fact fail. In reality, we don't really need a report to tell us what we already know. You failed, and you failed miserably. You can sit here like Dandy Alessandro did last board meeting and tell us the prosecution has a case to build against Ethan Crumley's parents, and that's why this report is taking so long. We see through it all. This isn't about Ethan Crumley's parents. This is about Madison, Tate, Hannah, Justin, all of the other victims, their families, and this community. That's what it has always been about. That's what it should always be about. How can we sit here and pretend that, how can we sit and pretend as though you as a district didn't fail our children? Now, this week, these parents have to go sit in a courtroom with the exact person who took their kids' lives and almost took the lives of other children. They have to sit and watch murder, or videos of their children being murdered. What if that was your child? Why? Why are we here? And how? I still can't wrap my mind around it. How can we not be angry? How can the parents not be angry? Do you know the strength that these parents must have, knowing that the very people who could have prevented their children's deaths still work in this district? Knowing that one is still actively employed in the very high school their children were murdered in and still actively working with high school students? Knowing that the people who could have prevented their children's deaths have full immunity? I'm angry for them. I can tell you that these parents have more strength than I can ever muster up the thought about having. I'm shaking, and I have nothing to do with these parents. You owe it to these families to tell them the truth about how you failed their children and do it in enough time for the rest of us to decide if we want to continue to leave our children in your hands.
Kit? Gravkowski?
I'll be honest, I'm really glad that they've all spoken, because I don't have to say 90% of what they said, because I can't do it anymore. I have actually pulled one of my children and put them in a hybrid situation, because I don't trust this board or the school district anymore. My daughter spent the entire, her entire sixth grade year being bullied by someone who probably does not belong in the school. However, what I actually wanted to talk to you about was the vote on the school board member and how you chose to use numbers instead of their names, when you can stand there and explain, say who sent a FOIA request that you clearly didn't understand. I don't know anything about the board member prospects. I honestly didn't watch, because these board meetings are getting to be very annoying, because 602 days is obscene. Going forward, here's a very simple request from every parent in this district, whether they think they know this or not. All votes done in public by this board should be done with full knowledge of who exactly you are voting on. No numbers, no letters. You state the name, A is so-and-so, whatever, yea or nay. There's zero reason other than to not be transparent about who you are planning on voting for. And from what I have been seeing and from the little tiny glimpse of the meeting I did watch, it was clear the decision was made before you guys ever got here.
Callie Myers?
I'm going to concur with pretty much what everyone else has said here, especially Danielle. As a crisis recovery expert, crisis intervention specialist, I can tell you that crisis recovery starts with safety. A person needs to feel safe to recover from a crisis. To be safe, you have to have trust. To have trust, you have to have open communications, transparency, and truth. Then you have to be responsive. And then you have to take accountability. That's what builds trust. That's what builds crisis recovery. And let's go in reverse. If you're accountable, you're responsive, you have open communications, transparency, and you have truth. That builds trust. Trust builds safety. And you won't need crisis recovery, because you will be prepared and you will be resilient. So your board policies require that you have the most qualified candidate. I listened to the interviews. You did not pick the most qualified candidate. It's very disappointing. The candidate you picked was somebody who's been on the board, who in my reputation is not credible, should not be on the board, thought that a dorm for 500 Chinese students owned by the Chinese government, given property on our high school for that dorm for 20 years at no cost, was a good idea. We all know now that the government says this was a national security threat. All the Confucius Institutes are shut down. That's the program that you brought in. There was no trust, there was no accountability when you were on board, when you had your 10 years president. You elected a person and appointed to the board after those interviews, and you didn't have any discussion. Nothing to discuss. Really? Then you did a secret ballot. That really doesn't go to this, this trust triad here, this truthfulness, this accountability. Secret ballots aren't allowed. How do you not know that? How do you not know that? Dr. Henry? Who picked him? Are you going to correct the record that he's not a doctor? That he's not a licensed mental health professional? Did you pick the right person? So moving on. Our government has provided phenomenal resources for you to be prepared for all levels of crisis. So there's these tools that they give you. And I have all these documents, I'll have them in the back for anyone who wants it. I have the QR codes for all of these. They have a safety and readiness tool. Okay? I have the QR code for that. That comes with all different components of it. And one of those, and I encourage everybody to take the code and take this test. It's a very simple test. They're going to do everybody, because it's going to show your preparedness. Do you really know what you're supposed to be doing here? Designated staff. Does your district have designated person who's responsible for the safety? Well, if I can go on. School climate, reporting systems, threat assessment, emergency operations plan, site assessment, staff and facility training, student training, exercise and drills, recovery plans. Okay? That's a simple question that you guys all can go online and fill out. You should do it, because you should know. It's going to tell you what you're supposed to be doing in all these, and then you can merit for that. Then there's the Safety.gov. I gave the QR code for that. There's the resources for a safety school, enhancing school safety using behavioral threat assessment model. And then all of these brochures that you see on the back, I'll give you one at the end of the meeting. I have those for you. I also have the QR codes for all of those brochures. These are put out by our government to give to you. Right? And this training is free, and these experts are available to you free, of charge. Right? You don't have to pay for this. Behavioral threat assessment, you don't have to pay for it. There's entities willing to come in and help you for free.
Okay.
Feel free to contact me. I'll get you those people. And again, anyone who wants to see these, the links are in the back.
Thank you. Okay, our scheduled activities, administrative clarification?
I have none.
Okay. Final board comments? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.